All set? Okay, we go ahead and call to order this regular meeting of the Killing and the Inland Wetlands and Water Course Commission. Due to the holiday, it is at a different week than normal, so we thank you guys for fitting it into your schedules. All right, so can we have the roll call, Karina?
All right, Sandy Eggers.
Here.
Paul Archer.
Here.
Chris McDonald.
Yeah.
Karina Torrey here. Amy Sterling is absent with notice.
Yes.
As is Rodney.
Rodney.
Yes.
Okay, first item would be adoption of the minutes of the August 5th, 2024 regular meeting.
I just have one question. Should, under the application, 24-1594, should somewhere in there say that I recused myself?
It probably should.
Yes, yeah, if we could. Yeah, we'll make sure that's noted.
Tidoc, any other changes or corrections? Do we have a motion to accept them with the correction that Paul did abstain and had left, I believe you even left the room for that application?
Make the motion.
Okay?
I'll second.
Motion's made and seconded to approve the minutes of the, what date are we at here? August 5th, 2024, meeting with that correction. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, does not look like we have a ton of citizens' participation waiting to jump at us.
No.
All right.
I'm a citizen.
You are, and we'll let you participate at the appointed time.
I'll wait till later.
At your regular time, I assume, nothing else special, though, right? All right, that's good to know. Very good to know. All right, um...
You're in trouble. Chris, if I may, do you have a quorum for the next one?
Yes, uh...
Did we change the quorum?
Yeah, we, everything dropped down. We have to still, as a point of business, at some point, do a organizational meeting just to update the bylaws.
Yep.
But effectively, we have dropped to a five-member board with two alternates, so that means our quorum is three.
Thank God, you can go.
All right.
Well, it just, it just looks better. I don't think anyone would question that your integrity on this, but it just looks better and the right thing to do. Okay, so the first item is application 24-1594 of Cameron Bucci for a 50-by-80 addition to the existing building at 817 and 827 Providence Pike.
All right, I'm out.
Carry on. Okay, do you want to give us another rundown, just to bring us up today? Did everybody, I think you all know the area. You all know the building.
Yeah, let me just...
All of us live around it.
Make that full size.
One man production, I switched the camera on Facebook, so everybody can see what we're talking about here. Let's, let me just reshare this. Supposedly, we are upgrading soon, and I will be able to do all this from here.
That's nice. Am I missing it, or is it not a summary, just the application?
Um, I didn't submit a staff summary.
That's why I was just wondering, so you'll...
But I did go to the site, actually went back to the site today, just to confirm some stuff with some of the wetlands' flags. Uh, I'm gonna switch this slide over to, there we go. So, as is presented, and the applicant is looking to do a welding and fabrication shop, renovating the existing building, we commonly, most of us know as the Kickapoo Building, and building a addition onto it, 50 by 80. The proximity to the wetlands, I think at the closest point, is about 25 feet to the closest wetland flag. That area is pretty overgrown. All the flags were accounted for when I went there today and walked through. There's some housekeeping that will occur, I think with the addition, the propane tank is gonna have to move, the existing propane tank would have to get relocated. I would consider that kind of ancillary, it probably also will have no impacts. Most of the wetlands appear to be actually higher than the area with the addition or on a same level. It kind of drops down behind the building. Wasn't seeing anything notable on there. I brought Allison Brady with me as well. She was identifying some of the plant species going through there and confirmed with what she saw for the wetlands' flags, based off just, you know, the site of it, not doing formal soil testing. We do have the applicant, Mr. Bucci, here. If you'd like, you can...
Do you guys have any questions for him about it? It looked pretty simple, to be honest with you.
I think we went through a lot of this last month.
Yeah.
In terms of questions and everything.
Had to be received, and then you had to wait till the next meeting.
Yeah. One question I had was, at some point, you're gonna be looking probably to redo the parking lot, resurface, or...
I would imagine at some point, yeah.
Just hit the, yep, there you go.
I would imagine at some point, yeah.
Okay, so generally speaking, it wouldn't expand, it would probably just be redoing in the same area, or...
Yeah, or maybe even shrinking it a little bit at some point.
Okay.
We went there the other day, and we were looking at where the, about where the building's gonna go, and I don't think we're even gonna be digging up any of the existing asphalt.
Okay.
So there might be a very small spot on the side, we do add some, but it won't be, I don't, I don't plan on doing any of that for a while.
Okay. And what's the commission's feel on that, like, when, when that comes up in terms of redoing the parking lot? Would you that, consider that kind of...
Pretty much expected to happen.
I would imagine.
Wouldn't you? I mean, it's just part of, if there was no, should we amend this, though, when we do a motion, to include the fact that...
If you'd like.
The parking lot could be repaired up to the footprint that exists.
Yep.
Without it being an issue.
Yeah, if, if the commission would like.
That would make sense to say if you had to redo it.
Yeah, I agree with that, yeah.
That would make a lot of sense instead of, I mean, if you're gonna make it bigger, yeah, come talk, but if anything is said...
Right, absolutely. I don't, I don't see it being any bigger, if anything, I see it being a little smaller at one point.
Yeah, especially on that eastern edge. It's right up against the line.
I think we all go by there enough, all three of us know that. Kind of like the back of our hands.
Yeah, right.
For all you neighbors. Do you guys have any question on it? It's not, nice to finally see it used.
Agreed.
That's for sure.
And you don't get the bear, though, right?
No, we don't get the bear.
Yeah, you said the bear's gonna go, huh?
The bear's going with the existing owner, it's in the contract. That was the first thing that came up.
Who would've thought, huh?
I wouldn't have, to be honest. Somebody had asked me about it, and then I asked the realtor, and they're like, oh, it's in the contract, the original, the owner, current owner's keeping it. I don't know what they're gonna do with it, but, or how they're gonna move it.
Yeah, I think it might've been. I think it might've been, that's true. No, it's nice that it's finally gonna get used.
How long's it been sitting there for? Years.
Ah, this last time, I bet it's longer than we think, I bet it was a couple of years pre-COVID, even this last time.
Oh, yeah.
At least.
Yeah, I know it wasn't used throughout COVID.
But it was at least a couple of years before that.
Before that, yeah.
Because didn't Bill O'Clair and Art, they went up to...
Pizza King.
But then they went up to the, no, they went up to, oh, it had been Kings Inn and stuff, though, right there in Putnam. They were up there. So I bet, I bet it might be empty 10 years.
I would say at least 10 years.
Time goes away quick. Then it was emptied again before that, and, you know, the, the problem is, the septic issues and everything don't make it really conducive to a restaurant.
Yeah. I don't think we'll really ever have more than 10 people there, max.
Yeah.
I think if we, if we had 10 people there, we'd be outgrowing it to a larger building anyway.
Yeah.
But, I mean, that wouldn't be for a while. Not, not 10 active people in the shop, at least.
And in terms of potential impact, being that it's a village commercial zone, everything pretty much has to be contained in the building. I mean, it's understood, parking, you know, small areas of storage in terms of something being like inert, not, not gonna have a chance of leaking, or anything like that.
Right, trailers and stuff.
Yeah, trailers and stuff is not a big deal. But, you know, you're not seeing like product or chemicals or anything like that.
Exactly, and we wouldn't have any of that. Any waste oil goes right back to any place that recycles it immediately, just because we can't really have it in our building with, you know, welding and fabrication.
It's already across the street from 100 pallets of stone.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also, that site, if you recall, was a junkyard.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Prior to, it was...
I mean, that's a big step up for that place.
Yes.
Yep. All right, do we have a motion to accept it with, with the addition that, how would we word about the parking lot?
It would be a motion to, I'm assuming, approve.
Yep.
With the modification to the application being that it's inclusive of repair work to be done for the parking...
Existing size of the parking lot.
Existing parking lot not to get larger.
I make the motion.
I'll second it.
Okay, motion's made and seconded to approve application 24-1594 with the additional approval of any repairs that have to be done to the existing parking lot up to the footprint that currently exists. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. All right.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah.
Do you have a question?
Yes.
What are the, what are the, I, I don't know if this is the meeting for this, but what are the guidelines for like a sign?
So, so the signs, you can have a free-standing sign, you can have wall signage. I'll have to get you the details in terms of the actual limits on the sizes.
I would like to do some kind of freestanding one, probably about where the bear is, unfortunately, because it's already lights powering on to that.
Well, as you know, so the next step is a site plan application. So with the site plan application, I can get you all that info.
Okay.
And then you can note it on your plan or with your application.
Perfect.
Including the sign. So this meeting, you know, it will close tonight, and then we're probably by, let's see what day of the week we are, I'm hoping by Thursday, there'll be a legal notice in the paper referencing, you know, your approval with modification. That triggers a 15-day appeal period. At the end of the 15-day appeal period, you can start pulling, generally speaking, you'd be able to start pulling permits. But because you have a site plan approval, you would probably by like Wednesday of this week, if you want to get on the 16th agenda, get some, get the paperwork in.
Okay.
So I'll probably be seeing you probably by Wednesday. There has been some updates on state statutes that do tie wetlands' approval expiration timeframes to that of site plan approvals.
Okay.
And special permits and whatnot, so we'll make sure we get you all that info, too, because it has changed a little bit.
Well, that's, I didn't know what it was before, so it works out perfect.
That's perfect, yeah, so it'll be all new for you. Cool, thank you.
Awesome.
All set? Good luck, it'll be nice to see it used again.
Thank you, appreciate it. All right, take care, guys.
Yeah, have a good night.
Swear to God, I think the allergies have been worse this last couple of weeks than they were most of the summer. Okay, we have one item of new business. Application 24-1596 of Frank Day Felice for construction of a septic, septic system, well-gravelled road and associated site work within 200 feet of the upland review area, and does not give the address here, but I think it does somewhere else.
Oh, that's a...
Was it Bear Hill?
Yeah, that's a mistake on my end, I apologize.
I think it was Bear Hill when I...
Yeah, it's 90 Bear Hill.
90 Bear Hill.
Yep.
90 Bear Hill? Okay, you want to give us the rundown first, and then...
Yeah, I'll just give you the, I'll give you, since you're just accepting it.
Yep.
I'll just give you the, the Cliff Note presentation tonight. All right. This property is known as 90 Bear Hill Road. This is a, it's a, it's just sort of like a little strip of land that goes out to Bear Hill Road with a...
Sure, come visit.
Yeah, there's a little strip of land that goes out to Bear Hill Road, and there's an existing, it's this little cabin, house, whatever you want to call it on there. It was actually a residence many years ago, and my, and the, my client's father owned the property. He built, and actually, the structure out there is actually pretty nice. It's a, it's a slab-on-grade, it's a metal building construction, it's all insulated, it's very nice inside. They, they've been using it as a summer camp, and they, they spend three to four weeks out there in the summertime, just hanging out. So, what we're doing is, we're doing a boundary line adjustment with the, with the property to the north, and they want to put in a septic system. Right now, they don't really, they've got a little, I guess for lack of a better term, a latrine that's there, and they do have a dug well, but they really don't have any, any type of, you know, sanitary system out there at all at this point, so. They're doing this boundary line adjustment with the next, with the lot over. We're a little over 500 square feet of temporary wetlands disturbance in order to put in a, the access driveway, calling it a haul road, and then they're going to restore the area within the wetlands when they, when they complete the work. Now, the wetlands are actually associated with, this is the former trolley line that used to go through there, so the wetlands that you see, this sort of like strip wetlands to the north are the result of excavation that was done as part of the trolley line excavation, installation well over 100 years ago, and it's just the remnants of that. But there'll be a, a electrical line, a force main, and, and a water line that'll ultimately be buried within that, that little wetland area after it's restored. That's pretty much it, it's...
I guess the question becomes, are we gonna go out, since we haven't been traveling as a pack too much recently, or, or do we? Up to you guys. I'm not gonna be around very much to go out, as the, I'll actually be back for the October meeting, it's a funny year of the way Columbus Day falls, so we're back from Freiburg the week before. Been there for 10 days, but we're back.
I believe this property's typically gated, so we would probably want to...
Yeah, it is, it is gated, correct, so that if you are going to schedule a site walk, you know, make sure that, make sure that the owner's there.
What do you guys think? So like I said, I don't know if I'd be able to make something or not, but it's up to you guys.
Norm, is this, is it a, is it an elevated flood zone, or just a Zone A?
Just a Zone A. It's not elevated. Yeah, the build, the building itself, the building itself is out of it, and then you've got...
We'll have to read that.
The rest is in it.
Yeah, so me and Norm reviewed this, we talked about this earlier. This most likely will also involve a special permit because of the filling, digging, regardless of wetlands inside of a floodplain. There's also language that talks about septic systems, and it's a question of the septic system or portion thereof.
Right, yeah, the septic system itself is, is well out of it.
Yes.
The only, the only portion that'll actually be in the flood is the, you know, will have the tank, and then just the, the conduit and the, and the electrical lines will, will be buried.
Yeah, and I, I don't have the section in front of me, I think for, when that comes up, that will be in coordination with the town engineer. I think that's how that conversation works, make sure everything in regards to the floodplain.
Yep.
So the goal is, it's temporary disturbance, so full restoration...
Yep.
Of the area that gets disturbed.
Yep.
Okay, okay. So, I mean, if the commission wants, our next meeting would be October 7th, if they, you guys want to try to schedule a time, or...
You guys want to go out, or...
You can, you'd have to do it early, because it gets dark.
Yeah.
That's true. I think we should.
We haven't been together nearly enough. Are you thinking we get out?
I'm okay.
The whole week before, I'm in Maine the whole week.
Should be one, want to make sure Rodney's here.
Yeah.
I mean, if you, if you wanted to do like a, you know, like a Saturday morning or something like that...
I'm not above calling Rodney.
Oh, definitely, confirm my schedule, okay.
For a sidewalk, I'd like to...
Oh, no, he answered me once, not again.
He probably turned his phone off now.
He's in Vermont, I'm surprised he answered the first time. For work, um, should we try scheduling something and then see what works for Rodney?
The 7th was the date that we would normally meet, is that correct?
Yes.
That's correct.
We could do it like a 5:00, that's good.
Yeah, we meet early, like 5:00, 5:30.
The same day?
Yeah.
We've done that in the past.
You're almost a genius.
Okay.
Almost.
So October 7th, we're thinking...
5:00.
5:30?
5?
5:30?
I was thinking 5:30.
Sounds good.
5:30, okay.
It'll, it'll be relatively quick, it's, it's a, it's a real small area that we're looking at.
Yep, that makes perfect sense, though, do it and then come right back over here.
Absolutely.
Can you get the gate open for us?
Yes.
Boat by boat. Perfect, okay. And I will make sure the agenda's updated to, like, at least we have the map and lot blocked, so.
That makes perfect sense. Okay, so do we have a motion to table this with a site walk scheduled before the next meeting, because you never know if that's a change, and no public hearing?
Yes.
Motion. Motion's made and seconded to schedule a site walk and no public hearing and table application 24-1596. Right now, it's scheduled tentatively for October 7th, 5:30 PM. All in favor?
Aye. And that was 90 Bear Hill?
90 Bear Hill, correct.
Okay. All right, sounds good, thank you.
Norm, will you just email me a copy, maybe two? Oh, yeah, if you got the full site, then I can scan it.
Because I'll be back from Maine that day by early afternoon. We'll give him a minute to see what else he has. Or should we all run away fast?
So you're doing the Big E with the...
Yeah, this weekend's War Town, last weekend was Hebron.
Sure you're checking.
Weekend before was Hattim, Neckwood, Stock, and North Hampton. And Big E, and then two weeks, two weekends in Maine. Big E or...
Big E.
I think we're already gone to Maine on the 26th, I lose track. All righty, John, any correspondence?
I have no correspondence to the commission. I did do one authorization action while we were away. If you give me a minute, I gave you the current address, but it was for 55 Coomer Hill, a single-family home. The address has been updated to a Cranberry Bog address, so. They were able to meet all the minimum separations in terms of greater than 100 feet for the septic system.
So it's gotta be on the corner, apparently.
Yeah, it is, it is a corner lot, there's a, a lot closer to the corner than it, but it is a, a, greater than 100 feet for the septic, well greater than 200 feet for the well from the edge of wetland. Really, the only thing that's in the upland review is the driveway. Being that, it met, was a perfect match for authorization application. So I did do that, well, the appeal period has already passed, so if we had gotten an appeal, it would've come to you guys. But the appeal period has passed, and I have signed the zoning permit for it.
Perfect. All right, anything else on the report?
Not too much. Internally, we are, and I don't have it with me tonight, but I do want to schedule a time for our bylaws to go through those, just, it's more housekeeping to...
How big, how much is there? If there's not a lot of other things coming other than this application in October, would it make sense to do it at the same time?
Oh, yeah, we can do, we can do it in October.
You guys think so? Just get it done, because what if things do perk up? I don't think so, but they could.
The biggest, the biggest thing's gonna be the fact to, to collate with the change from the council, that we went from a seven-member board...
Yes.
Down to a five.
Yep.
So just some housekeeping on that end. Around the same time, I'm gonna try to bring in a copy of a commission application. We're working through some updates with our, there's like five or six versions of applications that float around.
Now, would that have to be tied into the bylaws, or that's totally separate?
No, that's totally separate.
So those bylaw issues can be handled pretty quickly, I would think.
Yes, very, very quickly.
They're just really housekeeping, it's not like we're trying to hide something or anything, it's just updates and housekeeping.
And, and the application, I'm probably just gonna give you guys draft copies, and if you have any comments or notes, to shoot them back over to me. Emery in our office has been working through all the different boards and commissions, and we're gonna look to, just try to be kind of uniform on our application forms. Otherwise, there's not much of an update.
Oh, and then last week, they had summoned a gathering with the council, but then I totally forgot, because you waited too late to remind me, I'm gonna blame you.
Yes, yeah.
So I headed off to a farm.
So, I mean, and that, I relate to the council, that we've been happy with our updated quorum, that not much has been happening, we've kind of seen, I would say, a trickle of applications lately.
It's really all it is, it's kind of sad.
And anecdotally, on my end, I, I kind of pointed out, this happens kind of before elections sometimes, people do kind of hold off on big decisions, and, you know, construction tends to be that. So I, I'm encouraged we'll see more applications with the new year, but we'll see, who knows? Otherwise, they really didn't have much for comments from me either, and then we went over to, you know...
It was just time that they do the...
Yeah, and I had my ZBA chair there, so we did ZBA next after that, so. Owen Bell is pretty much done, if anyone wants to go take a look at that.
They never went for ice cream the whole time they were doing it.
I was there yesterday.
The pond, yep.
And I'm a fan of ice cream, how did you miss this?
Yeah, the dredging project is, I would say 99% done, so you guys are, you know, encouraged to go check it out while the weather's still good, and...
What about the moratorium?
So the, the moratorium's in effect for sewer, so if anyone would like to do a connection at any point for anything, be it through a subdivision, or even just a lot of record that happens to be on the sewer line, first and foremost, they should go to the sewer authority and submit an application, or, or at least correspondence, to see if, they will entertain the connection, or if it is just simply a no because of the moratorium. The question of alternatives has come up in, in regards to the sewer moratorium. The issue with that is our local ordinance that's controlled by the council requires connection within 200 feet, and it doesn't really give much flexibility beyond that, and that's how we pay our sewer tax and everything like that. So I, I'm not sure if the council will take up anything with that or not, but I have a feeling people find ways to be creative in regards to the ordinance, so. I think there were some suggested edits that are most likely going to the ordinance subcommittee at some point here, just to update some of that language that's in there.
Can I ask a question on this, the thing you just showed us?
Yeah.
Have we verified that the boundary line modification has indeed been done and completed?
So, and the boundary line has not been done. So, and the boundary line has not been done for that application that we just received.
Correct.
But we do have copies of the paperwork from the Health Department that has the abutter agreeing to the application in the process to start submitting paperwork. But it has not been executed.
Because how, and this is just me talking, just a-
Yep.
How can we entertain a wetlands application on a property from this De Felice if he doesn't own it, without having an ownership of the actual person who owns that land?
So I'll confirm with the applicant's representatives to see if we can have the, quite simply, a permission slip directly to-
There has to be something, because I didn't realize it wasn't already executed.
Yeah, the, what we got so far, I asked for earlier today, was something, because I knew the Health Department process had already started. So I do have that. I have it in my email, I didn't have it for you guys tonight. But the abutter, whose property is subject of the application-
Or you've just got to come in and sign the application?
Yep, they can sign the application, or give a blanket permission slip. But we do have paperwork that says they agree to the application, at least with the Health Department. So it's more of a housekeeping thing. Ultimately, if the abutter refuses, that's a different issue. But-
Because how do you, how do we give permission to work on a wetlands on someone else's property?
Understood, understood. So I will reach out to the applicant's reps[1727.42]